You and Menino.
Yeah.
God.
By the way, while we're killing this last two minutes here, the, we've made some efforts in the last few weeks to try to improve the sound quality. And one way we can tell that's a speaker right there. That when things are optimum, and even if someone's speaking there, you should be able to hear it here.
We ought to put one here, sir.
And there are several speed, three speakers out in the audience. But anyway, what we've found so far, I think, is that unless you're within six inches of the microphone, that picks up nothing. So keep that in mind. Some of us are better than others.
Why is everybody pointing their fingers at me?
If you're, if you're within six inches of it, same goes for the audience, too. If you're, you need to try to keep your, your head within six inches of the microphone. Have it pick up. Not picking on anybody in particular, Counselor Bounce.
Oh, my name now.
Thank you so much.
Doesn't do any good to have all this fancy equipment if we don't use it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for January 28, 2019, at this hour. We'll begin our meeting tonight, as always, with a salute to our American flag. I'd ask that you please rise and join Counselor Bruce Chini in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the record. We'll note that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Chini.
Here.
Counselor Bounce.
Here.
Counselor Littman.
Present.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Hamel.
Present.
Counselor Halsmer.
Here.
Mayor Engler.
It's a landslide tonight. Here. Sorry, Counselor.
Yeah, disappointing.
All right, let the record show that all six counselors are present at tonight's meeting, and a quorum has been established. Also note for the record that the council was joined at the front table tonight by our city manager, Scott Myers, and by our new finance director, Glenn Smith. First order of regular business, acceptance of minutes. Meeting, minutes to our last meeting on January 14th were distributed three days later on the 17th by the city clerk. No changes or corrections have been submitted to date, unless there are any at this time. I'm going to declare the minutes to our meeting of January 14th to have been approved as submitted by the clerk. Consent and action items. We have two consent and action items tonight to take care of quickly. The first one is traffic order 2019 dash two dealing with the Laconia, the annual Laconia Little League Opening Day Parade, which this year is scheduled for Saturday, April 20th, from 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m., a rite of passage in our city as it is in many. And a motion would be in order to approve traffic order 2019 dash two, Little, Laconia Little League Parade, to be held on April 20, 2019, from 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. Moved by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Next up is a also annual request from the Lakes Region Sled Dog Club to waive license, vendor, and loudspeaker fees for the annual World Championship Sled Dog Derby, which is scheduled for February 15 through 17. Motion being ordered to approve that request. Counselor Hamels makes that motion. Is there a second? Counselor Chini seconds the motion. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that carries as well. Citizen comments. Now is the appropriate time on our agenda tonight for anyone who is with us who wishes to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Only at this point in time for matters that are not on tonight's agenda. Anyone here meets that criteria? No? Okay. Next up is Mayor's report. A couple of things that I want to mention tonight. The, the first is, I want to congratulate everyone who played a role, and there were many people who did, in the Ballin' for Big Bob event that was held at Laconia High School approximately 10 days ago on Saturday. As I think most of you know, and most of the audience at home knows, former school board member and good friend Bob DeSadi is, has been accepted into a experimental treatment program for the cancer he suffers from down at world-renowned M.D. Anderson Hospital in Houston. And there are considerable expenses, as you might imagine, involved in that. Not the least of which are transportation back and forth to Houston, lodging accommodations and whatnot while you're there. And so the community and many of Bob's friends got together and organized a basketball tournament in the attempt to raise $10,000 on a one-day event to try to help the family with the expenses being met in his treatment. And the good news is that Bob and, and his wife Tracy were able to leave for Houston last Wednesday. And the better news is that the event raised $25,000, which is a really extraordinary amount for, for a one day or one afternoon, evening basketball tournament with volunteer officials and whatnot. And in addition to sending our best wishes to the DeSadi family, for obvious reasons, I call your attention to this and to, to everyone who lives in our city's attention to this because I have been alarmed recently by comments that are being made verbally, in letters to the newspaper, and comments that are recorded online in various forums and whatnot. That we have, we have several issues that the city council, that the city is dealing with at this point in time. And some people have taken the occasion for using the discussions about everything from the Colonial Theater to zoning for Airbnbs, to the heroin crises, to opioid crises, to whatever, to vent their anger, frustration, whatever you want to call it, at the city. And, and the city have used the occasion to, to say some very unflattering things about our city. And, and I, I, I take exception to that for obvious reasons. Most of us feel like this is a wonderful place to live and work, and that's why we live and work here. But beyond that, it, 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 I don't mind people criticizing what this council does, what the mayor does, or whatever. And that public discussion of that is, is fine and welcome. But I do think there, there should be a line there that says we don't need to denigrate everyone and everything about the city in order to make a political point about what the city council should or shouldn't be doing in any particular, any particular area. And I point to the DeSadi fundraiser because any community that could come together on that short a notice and raise $25,000 to help one of our own families is not a bad place to live. And I think that point makes itself. Second thing I'd like to address tonight, if I could, is one of those before-mentioned items, and that is this matter of regulation of the, of the new Airbnb industry, for lack of a better way of putting it. And there's, it's cause for a lot of discussion around town, again verbally, in the paper, online, and whatnot. And I have encountered myself a significant amount of disinformation about, in my mind, about what that project is about, or what that whole issue is about. And so I thought I would, I know that the people on the city council know better than this, so this is certainly not aimed at the council, but more at, more at the general public that I think I want to take this opportunity, and I encourage all of you to do the same, to try to, to get as much positive information out there as we can and correct information out there as we can, as the community works its way through this issue as to what is happening and what could happen. Because there's a lot of disinformation and misinformation, in my opinion, that's floating around. First of all, I want to stress the fact that, that when this issue was first brought to the city council's attention last year, the, the, the city did not rush to regulate this particular industry. What happened was some neighbors up on Old North Main Street brought the city council's attention to the fact that, that a, an out-of-town couple had bought a single-family residence in the old North Main Street area and were advertising it on Airbnb as a for-rent party house for short-term rental. And the neighbors objected to it because of the way the house was being used in a residential neighborhood, and they asked us to do something about it. Well, in checking on it, what we discovered was that we already had an ordinance on the books that forbade that particular behavior. And that ordinance had been on the books for probably decades, who knows how long. I would get, almost certainly far longer than anybody who's sitting on this council tonight has been in office. And obviously, when that regulation was passed years ago by the city council, no one had ever heard of Airbnb, and no one had ever thought of such an industry, and nobody could have predicted that it would, it would take hold to the extent that it has. We simply realized that there was a, a regulation in our zoning ordinance that said in several of our residential zones of the city, you are not allowed to have a boarding slash rooming slash lodging house. Already on the books, been there forever. So what we did was simply say, that's what the law is, and as of today, we need to enforce that law when it's called, when, when an example is caused, called to our attention. And that is what has happened. Not that many to date. I think we took her testimony at, at the time of that event last year, when that North Main Street, Old North Main Street case was called to our attention, that, that someone, I think, had identified, was it 70 or 80 or more different listings on Airbnb for homes in Laconia that were being listed as Airbnb rentals. And we certainly didn't rush right out to try to investigate all of those or whatever. We are certainly just taking them, the administration is simply taking them as they come. But so I wanted to stress that, that this was not an ordinance that was passed recently or any time in recent decades even, to try to outlaw this industry or whatnot. And there's a lot of debate going on in the community right now, for and against, whether or not this ought to be permitted. But the first thing we need to do is all agree on what the current facts are. And then if we don't like those facts, and the community wants to move in a different direction, or a part of the community wants to, to move in that direction, the city council is the body responsible for the zoning ordinances, and so any change could be made. Just because an ordinance was passed, or a line was drawn 30 or 40 years ago, doesn't mean it has to stay that way forever. And I think what we're all looking for is input from residents of the city as to whether or not they want to, to keep the law as it is, or, or change it, or at least perhaps change it in some of the areas of the city. So what the law says right now is that, as I said, boarding, rooming, lodging houses are not permitted in three of the six regions of the city that are zones of the city that are designated to be resident, primarily residential zones. We have six different zones in the city that are, that are specifically resident, oriented toward residences. And the three most prominent ones are Rural Residential 1, Rural Residential 2, and Residential Single Family. Now, the third one, Residential Single Family, is the, is not by area, but certainly by number of houses, is the most predominant residential zone in the city. And covers everything from, as an example, covers the Old North Main Street area, covers the Holman Street, Pleasant Street, Shore Drive area, covers Hospital Hill to the east of, what street am I thinking of? Counselor, help me out.
Highland. Pine Street?
No. Yeah, Pine Street and becomes...
Highland Street. Talking about hospital in Highland?
Highland, yes, thank you, I'm sorry. So everything east of Highland is in that single-family district, going toward the Guilford Line. The, the Country Club area of the north of the, of the Lakeport area, South Down, and, and Long Bay. The area up on the hill there behind the Taylor Community and whatnot, Cottonwood, and that area is all, is all in that same zone. So in those areas of the city, and there's a zoning map right on the wall over here, in those areas of the city, lodging houses are not currently permitted, period. And the only way you could get around that would be to seek a variance from the zoning board of adjustment. And while if people, so if people get a cease and desist order from the city, they are able, if they want, to appeal that decision, or appeal that, that to the zoning board of adjustment, and seek a variance from the, from the, and there have been several that have done that to date. The problem for those folks is, and I want to stress this, that, because I think the zoning board is getting some unfair heat right now on this issue. And it's unfair in the sense that the zoning board is highly regulated by state law, highly regulated by state law. They're just not able to sit there and make any decision, they want a decision, based on their own observations or whatever. There's a specific set of criteria that's outlined in New Hampshire law, both statutory and case law, as to what they, what items they have to take into consideration, and how they have to judge things. And a variance in this particular instance is extremely difficult to come by, if not impossible. I have yet to have anyone suggest to me a, a set of criteria where probably someone could get a variance from the zoning ordinance for an Airbnb in a zone that doesn't permit it. So they're simply following the law and saying, no, I'm sorry, you can't do that. Now, in, in three other areas that are primary, primarily residential, and these are, these differentiate from the other areas in the sense that when zoning was created in the city of Laconia back in the 1970s, there were already mixed-use areas in the city where there was a mix of housing, apartments, et cetera, et cetera. Where apartment buildings are not permitted in the single-family zones, those first three zones, they are permitted in other residential zones of the city, and there are differences. And that's primarily what the differences are. So there are two zones. The south end is an example of one of those zones, where, where short-term rentals are permitted by special exception. And you have to go there, again, there's a legal list of criteria for that. And you have to go to the zoning board and say, I would like to run an Airbnb operation in this neighborhood. And there's a list of, again, state-dictated criteria that you have to meet to be able to do that, that the zoning board has to, has to agree, you've met those conditions. But that's not, nowhere near as onerous as the variance requirement under law is concerned. So that affects two of the zones in, in the city. And then the, the last residential zone in the city is what we call Commercial Resort. And in the commercial, or I'm sorry, in the, in the shorefront residential area. And that is strictly an area at, at and around Weir's Beach, both in the Pendleton Road area, out toward Governor's Island, and in the area of the old Methodist camp and whatnot, in the, in the, in the Weir's Beach, immediate Weir's Beach area. Those two areas of the city, which are prominently residential, have their own zoning, different from everybody else's. And, for whatever reason, the law states that in those particular, those, that zone, in those two particular neighborhoods, an Airbnb is an acceptable use. And you don't need any kind of a permit or whatever to do it there. So that's why, in certain parts of the city, people can do it, and in other parts of the city, they can't do it. But again, I want to stress in, in wrapping up, and I think, not to steal his thunder here, but I think Counselor Hamel is going to address this issue when we get to committee business tonight. But for, for my part, I simply want to try to get everybody on the same page as to what the facts are. And again, to stress that this is the ordinance as it exists today. It was written by men and women, it can be changed by men and women. And so what we need to do, I think, as a city council, is hear from the residents of the various parts of the city as to what their opinions are about whether they do want or don't want this kind of operation in their neighborhoods. And if we need to move, and if, if, if it comes, turns out that we, we, there's a desire in certain neighborhoods, and the city council, we can be convinced of that, that we either need to change what's allowed in certain zones, or to move some lines so that one particular neighborhood or two or something is, is in a different zone, that is something I think the city council would be certainly more than willing to consider doing that. But again, we, great to have this conversation, but let's all get on the same page in terms of what the facts of the situation are. And I thank you for your indulgence. And now we will get to those committee reports. And first off, I'm going to ask, there was a meeting earlier tonight of the Lands and Buildings Committee, and I want to, I'm sorry. Counselor Bounce, you got a question?
I didn't have a question, I had a comment. I think everything you said is, is accurate and right. What I think needs to be emphasized is that when this issue was brought to the city's attention by people who were affected by what was occurring in their neighborhood, the city council did not take an attitude of, well, let's go out and enforce this ordinance all over the place. We took the attitude that if a complaint was made, we would, the, the city would determine if it was legitimate and investigative. That's all we did. We didn't take, we didn't target Airbnbs, we didn't do anything to enforce this ordinance in any other way except to respond to citizen complaints. I think that's important.
Okay, on to committee business. And there was a meeting earlier tonight of the Lands and Buildings Committee chaired by Counselor Hamel, specifically about Pearlie Pond Maintenance. Do you have a report, Counselor Hamel?
Our committee has a report, and we had about an hour meeting about Pearlie Pond. It's, you know, how it looks now, how it looked in the past. Several people got up and spoke about, you know, what we've been doing to it, or the neglect of it. So as a committee, listening to everybody and taking input, we decided that what we would bring to the city council is that a line item be added to the Parks and Recs Department with a sum of money to do maintenance on that particular park. And, you know, it, it could involve maybe hiring an outside landscaper to, you know, be the one responsible for that. But that'll be the decision of maybe the city manager, in Kevin. We've also discussed, for this spring, is to get an arborist or somebody that's familiar with the lifespan of a pond, you know, what, what involves in it, or how it, how it lives, or whatever, and ask that Kevin and the head of the Conservation Committee and Dean, head of the Planning Department, go to the pond in the spring with the family, the Pearlie family, and discuss, and, and most likely Counselor Chini also, I'll get him involved, discuss the pond, the future of the pond, the growth, how you're going to maintain the growth, what's good to maintain, what's good not to maintain, the tree, and have a discussion on, on the whole park area. And then come back to the city council at that point and, you know, discuss what they found out and what they could, you know, relate to each other, and to see where we are as far as what we can do, and also what the expectations of the Pearlie family is. There is a, an agreement between them and the city that dates back to 1988 that specifies what the city will do as far as maintenance, tree cutting, and brush removal, and all that kind of stuff. And so I, I think what we need to do now is, other than adding the line item, which we discussed with Scott, is to wait until spring and to see the growth that grows, and get the involved parties both there, and discuss the situation.
Okay, so do we need any legislative action in the, in the meantime?
I guess Scott would, the city manager would just add it to the budget, you know, we're kind of requesting. And I guess if the city council agrees to it, maybe a motion on that line item, or do you need one, Scott?
I think I've got the consensus, and certainly the council will have the final say during the budget process.
Okay, Henry?
Prior to the budget process, though, we discussed with respect to the arborist or landscape architect that we would be able to access the non-capital reserve fund to fund that activity.
Yep, that's, that's not a problem. And I think Scott also mentioned that they would find the money somewhere within the budget, or...
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's non-cap reserve, but we could find a, a spot for it.
Yep, so that would be paid by the city to, to do that.
Did I see another hand up?
You did, but I, I think Henry referenced what I was about to say. I do think it, I think it's important that we also discussed a landscape architect, not just an arborist.
Well, to me, whatever professional needs to be there to...
Fair enough.
To speak of the pond.
Yep.
Then, you know, whatever Kevin thinks to get, get there.
Okay, so we don't need any legislative action? It'll just be a part of the budget that you put together?
Yeah, we'll arrange the meeting in the spring with staff and professionals and the family, and it'll be part of the budget.
Except we could do the effort of doing the assessment under the current budget, is what we're saying.
Right, in which case we'll bring you a resolution if we need to transfer some money from somewhere to do that.
Okay. All right, any other committee business tonight? Counselor?
Kind of coincidental, yeah, that you were speaking about the Airbnbs. We've been hearing a lot about that lately, and it's just not this community. It's a lot of communities and how they're going to deal with it. It's pretty much everywhere, quite a growing phenomenon. So I guess what I'd like to propose to the city council is to, probably under government operations and ordinances, to look into how we were going to address the Airbnbs. I don't think they're going to go away. I think it's something that, you know, I guess people like to do. I just happened to go on the phone and just bring up Laconia Airbnbs, and I just put in a couple dates for this month, and 299 homes came up. 299 now...
It was out of date.
You know, it's, but I mean, it isn't just Laconia, it shows like the Guilford area, too, so it's probably like the Laconia area, I would imagine. But, you know, for the end of the month, there's 200, 300 homes available. So I have a friend that I'm, you know, she has an Airbnb, it's in a different town. And she is actually registered through the state as an Airbnb. And she has to pay rooms and meals tax. And, you know, I mean, I think what we need to do is go to this committee and find out how all this is going to be regulated, how we're going to allow it or not allow it.
My apologies.
You know, if, if they're going to be that many in the city of Laconia, I think the council or the city, especially this...
I'm sorry.
All right. Anyway, I, I think the city needs to know where these places are. So if they're going, if they're going to have Airbnbs, I think they should meet me to register through the city that they're doing this, so we know where they are, if there's... If there's problems, we know, the contact people. They def- even if they don't live in the state, they, you know, they got to have somebody here or be, you know, we got their cellphone that they're going to answer. Because there has been obviously situations in two locations that I know of, of, you know, loud all-night parties and, and all this kind of stuff. I would think also that code enforcement or the fire department, somebody needs to inspect these buildings and say, you know, you've got a building this size. Okay, you can have five people, not thirteen or fifteen or twenty in that same place. You know, regulate it that way. And if it's safe or not, you know, and, and there should be some fee to the city to, to pay for, for these inspections and that kind of stuff just to make sure everything is on the up and up. You know, probably something else we should look into is if we, if the police department has to go there three times in one night, then they're going to get a fine. Some kind of a, a fine system, you know. Theoretically, I think this should go through the state. And I think we should involve our legislatures als- legislators also, you know, to possibly introduce some kind of a bill that would regulate this to help the cities. We can't tax anything because we don't have that ability to, to tax. That's all done through the state. So, but I do know that people are registering them through the state as Airbnbs, and they are paying, like I said, the rooms and meals tax. So I believe we should, as a council, start investigating this and see where this goes. Because if you've got 299 of them out there right now.
Okay. I'll, I'll take up the gauntlet in terms of what you just said. I don't know how much regulation we should have or shouldn't have. I don't know what the process is in terms of all that. But I'm happy to schedule a government operations and ordinances to begin the process of reviewing this. And I'm happy to do it at our next regular meeting. We'll probably go one after that, but.
No, obviously you've got to involve the Planning Department.
I got to, we got to get some people, we got to get the Planning Department involved.
CBA probably.
Enforcement involved. We got to get some input about how we're going to start out this process and what we're going to do. And I probably want to talk to, to your friend who's got an Airbnb and registered it and what the process with the state is and all of that stuff. So I'm happy, I'm happy to start that whole process moving forward. I, I think that probably what we need to begin with is just some kind of an organizational meeting. To decide how it is we're going to proceed. Maybe some input from the Planning Department, from the city manager. And are you comfortable with doing that in one or two meetings down the road?
Let me share what I've got for you, and then maybe we can come around back and I can better answer that question for you.
Okay. I see you came prepared.
Well, as part of our, as part of our involvement in the New Hampshire Municipal Association, and when, if you recall back to July or August, when we went through the policy priorities of that organization and what they were going to take the lead on to go and represent on behalf of cities and towns in the legislature, one of the items in there was short-term rentals because that's an issue in a lot of communities across the state. And with your support, I was able to go to that conference and raise that from an action level, which is a second level, to a priority level, meaning they're looking to find a sponsor and bring something forward. So Senate Bill 69 is the initial step for that. It's actually set up for a hearing on Wednesday of this week in Room 102 of the Legislative Office Building at 10:15 in the morning. It's a small step, and I want to stress that this would do nothing to supersede local zoning ordinances or local zoning ordinances, Trump whatever it might be, and Senate Bill 69 and what it may evolve to if it ever becomes law. My understanding of it is it would be enabling legislation. A community could choose to adopt the provisions of it. They would not, it would not be forced upon them. But again, it's a small step. So it appears that it's going to allow fire chiefs or fire departments to inspect short-term rental properties for fire code violations and other hazardous conditions and authorize a health officer to investigate sanitary conditions. That's the limited scope. Discussions about getting a property owner's name or phone number or a local contact, contact person, I, I think are very important things in order to make the bill workable for most communities and some other provisions. So there is a, there is a requirement, if you enable this, to, to require someone to register with you. I don't know where the fees are limited or not and that type of stuff. It's my understanding that anybody who is registering with the state right now is doing so only for rooms and meals tax purposes, where I think a couple of these platforms, Airbnb and maybe VRBO, got into some situations where the state were saying, hey, your folks need to be collecting rooms and meals tax as any other lod- you know, lodging establishment does. I think that's where the registration that maybe you're referring to. But that does nothing at the local level. It does nothing for inspections, enforcement. Would we be allowed to give someone a three-strikes cure out if you had three police calls, whether they were in one night or over the period of one year? I don't know. But this, this bill's in its early stages. But it certainly was something that was on the forefront of our mind and NHMA. So it was something we're closely watching. Happy to take a road trip down on Wednesday morning with some of you or all of you and listen, offer input as to some of the thoughts about, you know, it needs to have a local contact, and we need to have an enforcement provision, and there needs to be a fee associated with it to cover our staff time and any of the other things that, you know, we feel might be appropriate for these, for the committee to hear.
All right, let me suggest some wording first off. We're going to have a motion here made by Council Hamel to, to add to the agenda for the Government Operations and Ordinance Committee. Item, item C5, which would be regulation of short-term residential. Resident, short-term residential rent, rental business. Residential rental business, short-term. Is that acceptable to you, Councilor?
Yes.
All right. How about you, Councilor? Is that okay with you?
Yep.
All right, you care to second that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, Council Ballance seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in front of that motion carries. Now, do you want to schedule a meeting on that subject or hold off for a while?
I want to hold off. I, I want to get a sense of, of what we need to do and what we've got available and get some input and see where we're at, so.
Probably good.
What, we can put it on the agenda for next meeting, and that time we'll probably have a sense of what would be the appropriate times to schedule.
We can bring this up again at our next meeting under committee business and see if you want.
Committee business and scheduling it, so.
Scott, do you know of any, any towns anywhere that might have started this process? I'm thinking like maybe Portsmouth or, you know, towns that are resort.
I don't think, we're a home rule state, so I don't think they have the authority to at this point. So other than the state requiring.
Other than zoning.
Folks, other than zoning. So, but I know communities such as North Conway, Portsmouth, Lincoln.
Yep.
Huge issues, and, and those three are the ones that come to the top of my mind. But very big issues for those communities.
So they're going through the same thing we are, kind of.
I, I think they're looking for some assistance. And I know I forwarded you all a, an article that Dean Treford and our planning director had forwarded on what Massachusetts recently adopted, and Governor Baker signed in. And that was a little more comprehensive than Senate Bill 69 as it stands right now. That required the registration and the inspection. And if you were renting out for a combined period of a total of more than 14 days in a period of time, then it triggered something a little stronger versus if you were the true occasional renter and therefore you weren't renting the party house for, you know, 13 weeks straight in the summer. I think that was the approach that Massa- Massachusetts took was to kind of say, you know, let's, let's step it in and, and put a threshold of where we think you crossed that line and need to be more heavily regulated. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but that's what Massachusetts did.
Are you, are you kind of referring to the time, the length of a year that they rented out compared to living there?
I think that's what Massachusetts said. If, if you rented out for a total of 14 days, and I'm not talking consecutive days. That could be five weekends. You know, if you cross that threshold, now we need to know a little bit more about you, make the inspections, get you registered, get the contact information. You know, put a penalty structure in there so that you don't become a nuisance or a problem for either your neighbors or for your local community, that type of stuff.
I don't want, I don't want to also lose sight of the, the fact that we have two broad issues here. Issue number one is an examination of our current ordinance in terms of allowing and not allowing these businesses in the first place, and where they're allowed and why, and where they're not allowed and why. That's number one. And then if we continue to permit them even in part of the city, then the question is how do we, how do we or do we regulate them? And to what extent do we regulate them?
Well, the only way we can regulate them now is through zoning. You know that, right?
I'm sorry?
The only way we can regulate them now is through zoning. That's, that's our power to regulate them.
Yeah, in other words, I think the city manager, you know, point is the overbearing one at this point in time, and that is that for, for, for a regulatory system to be put in effect, similar to what they have in Massachusetts or anywhere else, there's going to have to be enabling legislation at the state level to allow cities to do that.
But if they're crafting that on a very limited basis, whether we chose to adopt that enabling legislation or not at some future point, it might make sense to have a few more items on the checklist.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
So did you say that their, part of that legislation was, was a code enforcement or inspection of the property?
Right now it was for fire safety, hazardous conditions, and I put my phone away about code enforcement.
Okay.
So probably looking at means of egress type of thing.
Sanitation.
Sanitation, yeah, sanitation.
And is, is there some form of, that they'd have to register, either through the state or through the city or?
That would be locally, so we'd have to create a form. Again, I don't know what fees, if any, would be allowed. I don't know what other of the items that we just spoke of.
Could be questions to have.
It could be, so it'd be good to, to hear what the committee hears on Wednesday and what direction they take it. And then ultimately, if it were to come out of the Senate, it needs to go over to the House and whole other set of hearings and opportunity to chime in if it makes it out of the Senate in the first place.
Do you know who the sponsor of that bill is?
I can get, I don't want to open my phone up again right now, but I will email it to you tomorrow morning.
All right.
Thank you, Scott.
Anything else on this item? Any other committee business tonight? How about liaison reports? Any liaison reports tonight? No? Okay, we are on to, back to citizens' requests. This citizens' request to comment. And at this point in time, we are talking about current agenda items. So if there's anyone with us tonight in the audience who wishes to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda, now is the time. Please identify yourself and where you live.
My name is Dawn Nesbit Taylor. I live on 96 Clinton Street in Lakeport. And we have been informed that there is, our street has no parking. Been posted, please take notice. And we want to thank you, whoever the powers that be, that have done that. There's a consideration that has been brought forth in the letter we received that there's no parking now, and they're considering this to continue. And we've lived at our home for 10 years, a little bit over, and we, a few years ago, started having lots of issues. Now, we on our street have the nightmare from hell driveway. So we try and help others keep their areas clear and, and such. And we also look out for our neighbors just because different things in our neighborhood have happened like others. So we have an apartment building next to our house that the landlord offers many apartments with not enough parking. And on where we live, now I do have some that you can have. It has some pictures kind of showing going up the hill, going down the hill. You can't see around the corner as you're going up the hill. So there's a hazard right there. But if people are parking on that corner, it's really hazardous. Now, we have a guard rail that abuts kind of our property in the road. And we have on occasion parked out against that guard rail. But we have always taken into consideration the emergency vehicles, that we're not going to block emergency vehicles from getting up to the folks up above. With these folks that don't have a place to park, they have parked on our street with a continuous hazard to the rest of us. We can't get around, they'll park on both sides of the corners. So if you look at those, you know, in front of the apartment building, and a couple of those have the arrow in the wrong place by a telephone pole, just so you know. But the way, when you can't see coming up the street what's coming down at you, and coming down the street, you can't see around the corner. So as you know, many people fly. Doesn't matter about the speed limit, so we have that issue. But if you've got cars parked all along that corner, there's a problem. And somebody's brought it to the attention, and they've posted it. And we would love to keep that posted all the way up the right side, going up the hill and down in front of the apartment building because of the hazard. We'd like to have parking at the bottom of the hill before that telephone pole so people can have guests and, and maybe an overflow. Because some people have work cars, regular cars, guests and such. And the other part that we'd love to respectfully request that parking is allowed, summer, spring, fall, along the guard rail. We hug, hug it tight. Our driveway, we fit our two motorcycles and our two cars. But sometimes we need to put one on the street to maneuver things. We don't leave them there overnight. We always make sure we're, we're hugging the guard rail so the emergency vehicles can get up. And we've discussed this over the years with the fire department when they go up. They use our road to train folks. The top of our street has such a sharp corner that those fire trucks, they get stuck there, there's a problem. And so they train their personnel there. And DPW, they have their work cut out for them on our street. We have natural springs that pull up, there's all kinds of things. And when you've got all those big ice dams coming down our street trying to plow, they can't get around those parked vehicles. We've spoken to police on numerous occasions, and they've told us to post properties, and they won't do anything to help us. So we were really happy to see this come to fruition, and we really hope that we can have a little bit of parking, not in the winter, out on the street near the guard rail. And I really appreciate you taking the time to listen. Do you have any questions?
May, may I ask you, so the, the proposal that was put for the council at our last meeting was to, to ban the parking from 88 to 126. Are you familiar with those numbers?
I know 88. I'm assuming 126 is up by the Prospect Street, up around the corner.
Is that right? I'm looking at the DPW chief here.
He says yes.
Yes, all right. And where is the guard rail? Below or above that?
At 96 going up the hill.
It's on your left as you go.
So the way this is currently written, you could not park by the guard rail. Correct.
Well, I wasn't sure. I was a little confused. So maybe that you're clarifying that the other side of the road should be totally posted, no parking.
It's, it's very narrow, even with the guard rail. When you park on that, on that side of the street with the guard rail, it's still very narrow and there's not a lot, lot of room to pass.
You're absolutely correct, but with that, like I said, we have discussed it with the, the fire department and such. We don't stay out there long, but we're not impeding the traffic flow around the corner where it's a total hazard, where you can't see the coming and going.
Right at the bottom, right at the bottom, is your startup Clinton Street? As you start up Clinton Street, right around that corner? That's a real hazard of cars to park there. I, I agree with you totally.
It's awful.
I'm, I'm not sure in terms of, certainly during the winter, parking along the guard rail would be very difficult because of the, the plowing needs for the, for the whole road. I'm not so sure about spring, summer, and fall with respect to, number one, that steep hill. Number one, number two, that wicked curve as you get out of Prospect Street.
That's horrible.
And the ability to get by. I know that if you have a car parked there, you wouldn't be able to get two cars by at the same time. the same time. One would have to wait for the other to go and pass by. I think we can all agree with that because of how narrow that road is. And I'll disclose that I live at the top of the hill on Prospect Street, so I'm very familiar with both Cole and Hill and Clinton Street and getting to my home during the winter, summer, and fall, so.
And the, and the cars there have been halations. I mean, we didn't have this about three years ago.
No, it's, it's only been recent, and it's been sporadic. I don't come down Clinton Street that much, because it's easier to go out Cole and down Hill Street. It's just, and I don't have to make that 127-degree turn to get from Prospect onto Clinton.
Right.
That's where, yeah, right at the end is where all the ice gathers, right by the apartment building. Right at the top of Clinton, of Clinton and Prospect Street, and right down at the bottom where the apartment building is, where 88 is. So, I'm not certain what we do about the, your request for parking along the guard rail.
Okay.
Maybe some kind of interim parking for timeframe. I, I don't know how to resolve that, but...
I would say, like you were saying.
Sir, please, use the microphone.
I'm Richard Nesbit-Taylor. I agreed to put a parking limit time there, because if you don't, the people that live in the apartment building...
Know exactly what they're going to do.
Okay, what they're going to do. So if we put a half-hour limit, which I think is reasonable, I mean, if our friends come, you got to move it in a half hour. We'll figure it out when it happens type of thing. I mean, John that owns the new, the house across the street that he redid, 87?
Yeah.
They treat him like crap. I've got pictures that they packed on his lawn when they told him they couldn't pack on the road anymore, so they just pulled up on the lawn. Don't ask them or anything.
Well, he's put out a little...
I did that.
Oh, did you do that?
I posted the sign saying, "No parking, no trespassing," per the police department.
Well...
So I called them soon as they did this, and they said, "We can't help you. Why are you telling me to post it?"
Well, now, now we can't...
So now I put, so they couldn't, and I got called all kinds of names because of it. Hey, if you're asked, we're to let you park in this driveway. But if you don't ask, we're not going to let you have it. I mean, it's courtesy we don't get. And when we saw the signs, in fact, the signs were falling down the other day because the city only stapled them. I screwed them in so they couldn't fall off, because as soon as they disappear, they're going to park right out there again.
Would I be correct in guessing that there are no parking spaces outlined on the street?
Oh, yes, you would be correct. Yes.
And you couldn't, you couldn't put parking lines there, because like the counselor said, really isn't that much room. When, I used to watch the fire department go up with the big truck, the ladder truck, and they gets, I watched them, and the guy wasn't hugging the guard rail to make that corner. I go, "Honey, they're going to get stuck. Get ready for them to call a wrecker." Sure enough, they get stuck. But that hill is such that if a car's parked there, because I asked the, the ambulance, because they go up through doing whatever they do, and he says, "There's plenty of room. You can park there in the summertime, but not in the wintertime." Well, we don't park out on the road in the wintertime if we can help it. If we do, it's to get the yard cleaned and get it back in. But I don't even do that, because I use John's house across the street. But it's very, I mean, the guy had a, a Jeep there for almost three months, unregistered, uninspected, and the patrol got by, they did nothing. That guy sat on that corner for three months, creating a problem. I mean, then finally, somebody got a hold of him and they moved it. And they just, they do it despite everybody. They'll park there, and then like the landlord will come and park here, and we can't get up the road. My wife had to call the, the police department, have them come up and tell them to move so we could get in our driveway, because you couldn't get through. So that's why I say what you guys did was great. I saw it on one side, I left to go somewhere to do something, I come back and they're on my side, and I go, "That was good. I liked that idea."
Have you had any issues since the posting of the signs?
Them parking?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Well, just once, the landlord, I called the police department, and he was there for 45 minutes, and they never come up and did anything. He was parked right between the two signs in front of his house, the wrong way. He was going up the hill on the wrong side. I mean, he's another one. He doesn't... I'm a landlord, okay, so I know what the city goes through. I, I abide by the rules. And that one rule where you said about fining, if the cops go to your house so many times? City of Franklin, where I have my property, if they're there three times in a year, it's a thousand-dollar fine to the landlord. So, I mean, you got to do something. I agree. There's landlords that just don't care.
All right, thank you for the input. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? Mr. Holmesy.
Good evening, every, good evening, everybody. Richard Holmesy, 84 Summertown, Lecony, New Hampshire. Want to thank you for all your efforts in, in taking care of our fair city. And the mayor had a great speech tonight, and I, the 25,000 that was raised, I was going to applaud because I think it, it deserves a round of applause. And it was very nice that they did that, and that they raise those kind of funds. The Woodvale Expansion Project on the sewer system. I have some interest on Woodvale, and that's why I'm here tonight. I was just handed a package from the Public Works Department, and I just got to kind of encourage or, or support the program, whatever it may be. With Woodvale, I think it's Woodvale Estates, we've got some properties that are undeveloped. We've got some properties that have very old septic systems. We have no storm drains in the neighborhood. The lake's right down the street. There's a couple of brooks and, and still water areas that should come into effect. I think that the sewer system will only add value to the neighborhood. It'll only make the neighborhood more appealing. I think it's been long overdue. I, I'd be willing to go door-to-door when the city does put together a package like they put together tonight, if they're going to put together a letter, if the city needs a petition signed, if it will help the city, if it will help the council. I'd be willing to be an advocate and go door-to-door to get signatures of support or signatures against, to show that, now that I'm seeing somewhat of a presentation that's going to come before you tonight, I guess, from the street department, Public Works, to show whether it's going to fly or not. And I, I understand through Wes Anderson, today, we spoke quite considerably on the phone, of how it's going to work and how it's going to be presented. I just think that we could be doing some damage right now as we sit here with septic systems, leaching fields, that we don't know the conditions of them. We don't know what people are taking care of them, how they're taking care of them, if they're taking care of them. We don't know where that, that, that leaching field liquids run to. I don't know. I don't know if you know, if these leaching fields overflow and people don't realize it, or they're absentee owners. There's, there's many reasons why we should have this. Looking at the numbers, I think the numbers work. And I understand if you don't get a certain amount of people, then the, then the, the program's not going to fly, and the city's not going to take it on. I guess at this point, I'm just looking for whatever we can do as neighbors to support the program, and whatever you need from me as a property owner, I'd be glad to support the program, and I'll take questions, sure.
Right now, the proposal that's being considered is a 50-50 split between the city and the ratepayers. Do you have any thoughts about that? I guess I want your input in terms of...
Do you have butters, Jimmy? Do you have butters as the ratepayers?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Right, so, so...
What did I say?
You said a butter, or you said ratepayers.
Okay.
Right, so, I mean, I guess, I guess that's a personal opinion, because everyone's got a different financial burden. Looking from my perspective, as a general consensus, I would say that it's going to add to the value of the home. It's going to lower your expenses, because you won't need to empty your septic system every year. It's going to give you the ability to use more of your square footage of land, because you won't have to tie up your land with septic tank and leaching field. So it'll give you more buildable space, possibly. It will give you more possible driveway space or concrete areas or asphalt areas to park on, or to put a basketball court for your children, or a little playfield, you know, whatever it may be, if you don't have to have the septic system. It'll prevent any contamination from getting into our still waters, our wells, our creeping down to the lake, to the, to the lake at the end on Wentworth Cove Road. So, from my perspective...
Don't eat them like...
From my, from my perspective, sorry, from my perspective, I think whatever it costs is a great investment for the city and for the homeowner. Obviously, nobody wants to incur an expense, whether it's their home, their car, you know, their eyeglasses, whatever it may be. We want to keep our expenses down as much as we can to be able to provide better for our families, right? Have more, or enjoy more, or have, not have to work two or three jobs, whatever. So, but at the same time, looking at the numbers of what you're going to save with Riddex, not needing to maintain monthly, not needing to empty it, being able to have a, a garbage disposal to absorb product in your house, that'll cut down on the mess in the, in the trash barrels out in the street. That'll prevent messes in the street from animals eating through your rubbish. You know, it's, it's going to, it's going to make a difference. So, from the money perspective, I think it helps everybody. I can't speak for everybody, but I think it helps everybody. And I think there's 51 properties, roughly, that are involved in this project, and I have no problem going door-to-door with a petition or with a, you know, a, a letter drafted up. I drafted up one last year, this year, at last year's meeting, when I first came in 2017, 2018. I drafted up a letter for myself as a petition. I think I can go around and get it signed when the time comes. So I think now the city, whatever they propose, is going to put a letter together, and, correct me if I'm wrong, and then have that letter sent to every property owner, looking for their support or their lack of. Is that the situation?
Yes.
Okay. And, and what will they be given for a timeframe to respond to this? And if people don't respond, does that just mean that they're not interested? Is it taken as a, you know, you have to do it by a certain date? How does that work?
Kenny, I assume Public Works will do that, correct?
Yeah, I think we would look at a reasonable timeframe and follow up with folks that we didn't get a response from, and try to make every effort to contact them, just to make sure that their voices are heard.
Okay. I, I will definitely do my part, because I'm very much in support of the system. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for speaking up.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate it. Woodvale Drive, I would ask everybody's...
Did we get your name, sir?
Uh, I'm sorry, Donald Wedgley Green.
Thank you.
And would like everybody to take into consideration that the roads are crumbling, and it is awful expensive to get these septic systems pumped out. And there is streams that do lead to the lake. I would like somebody to test that water that goes to the lake down by with the... What's the name of the street? No, the other, yeah, street.
Wentworth Cove Road?
Wentworth Cove Road, where that water goes out onto the lake. I really, truthfully feel that that needs to be tested. And again, the roads are all crumbling, and it'd be pointless to resurface the roads if we could get all of this done. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, thanks for speaking up. Anyone else on this subject or any other that's on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, we're going to move on to city manager's report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of quick things before I get to the written reports in your packet. I, I believe Mr. Holmesy will allow me to use his comments to help do a little education, but for anybody who looks at our agenda online where we post it, not only is the agenda there, but all of the background material that are in city council packets is all contained therein. So if folks see an agenda item, they can just click on the hyperlink, and they can know exactly what's being said, proposed, recommended, all the background information. So when you come here, hopefully we've got folks who are educated, not just trying to hear things and, and offer up comments without, without having all the information that's available for you. So I think our staff does a great job in putting together these packets, and we do the hyperlinks for the public's benefit, so just want to throw that out there. Second item is, I'm informing the city council that with this meeting, I'm reappointing Karen Mudgeet to a three-year term through March 2022 to the Board of Assessors. Karen is completing her first three-year term. She's been a real asset to the board. She works for the state of New Hampshire in Department of Revenue, but not in a property tax field, but she's got a good grasp of finances, and she's really been a good participant, coming through the learning curve, asking questions, and I'm pleased that she's looking to continue to, to serve the city in that capacity. So thank you to Karen. My voice is failing me tonight, so I'm going to go very quickly through two reports that you've got in your packet, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on all of the projects. Obviously, we're in the middle of January, end of January. We're in the planning stages for when Mother Nature allows work to begin in the spring on everything from our roads, drainage projects, irrigation, River Walk, beach erosion is going out to bid any time now. Be looking to do that restoration work this spring before the beach season. So a lot of, a lot of behind-the-scenes in the planning effort, but it does gear up to be another very busy construction season next year on a number of fronts. On the economic development report, unemployment continues to be at historically low levels. On the second page of the report, we have the December Consumer Price Index number in, so the final inflation number for calendar year 2018. And that's important for us for a couple of reasons. That's the, one of the calculators that we use in the tax cap calculation for limitations of next year's budget, so 2.5% is what we'll be using. That's also the inflation index that was tied into the collective bargaining agreement. So on July 1, start of our fiscal year, that'll be the cost of living adjustment in our employment agreements. And with that, I think I will stop there and entertain any questions or comments anyone may have.
Questions or comments? Councilor Hamel.
One question, Scott. On the, the project updates under the TIF district, I was noticing that they were asking that funds from the TIF account be expended on the, the Weir's sign to upgrade the bulbs to better lasting bulbs and stuff. Now, I believe it's my recommend, my, not recommending, my thoughts that when we did the Lake, Lake Street project repaving and all that things, all those things there, that the monies from the TIF account will be going back towards paying towards the bond and principal of that project, and that those funds are pretty much consumed and actually are in a deficit from month to month, or whatever you want to call it, or payment to payment. And that future income from that would also be used to pay back the city on some of that cost. So where do they think that the money's going to come from if it's already all expended and it's, and that account is in a deficit now?
You were correct in, in that the TIF is paying for the upgrades to you will to that project on Lakeside Avenue, and that early on, there was a due-to, due-from, because the Weir's TIF district was not generating enough revenue to cover that portion of the bond. So we had done a pro forma that I don't have in front of me, but I can certainly provide reminder, updates to the council if they're looking for it. But I think over the course of the first four or five years, that due-to, due-from accumulates in its entirety to about $150,000. For some reason, sticks in my head, don't hold me to that number, but that amount. And then the TIF is generating enough to not only pay back the debt service after that, but to start to reimburse the general fund over a fairly, fairly reasonable amount of time. I believe one of the stipulations, and again, I'll, you have to go back and look at the resolution, was the Weir's TIF Advisory Board had asked that we take an amount of either 85 or 90% of available funds and not, and not use 100%. So I just need to go look back to see what the final determination was that was made, because I know that request came just off the top of my head without having the document in front of me. I can't tell you where the council settled on that.
Well, I may, I may be wrong, but the original request was that, that we used 80%. But then when we decided to go from Tower Street up to the next street, I can't think of the name right now.
Foster.
Foster, that we, as a council, decided that the request from 80%, we increased that to 100%.
Okay, so let me just go confirm that. I don't have, I don't have that number on the top of my head.
Okay.
But I'm happy just to look at what the motion was and where it ended, and be happy to report that back to you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for the manager? No? Okay. We'll move on then to new business. A number of items of new business tonight, the first of which on page twenty-three of your packet is sanitary sewer expansion in the Woodville Drive area. Mr. Myers? I'm sorry, Krista's going to take.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this, uh, subject was broached with the council, I believe, back in the fall. I don't remember the exact timeframe. Um, there was discussion about narrowing the scope down and focusing on one, uh, particular expansion of the sewer system and to see if there was support from the council and then to go to, um, the folks impacted in the neighborhood to see if there was support there based on, uh, a cost scenario. This particular project was engineered a couple of years ago, so we have what we feel are very firm cost on that. It, uh, does include fifty-one single-family homes on Woodvale Drive, Rolling Lane, Pine Notch Circle. Uh, we, uh, have the estimate of one point four million dollars. We've, uh, you've heard about some of the benefits of, um, expanding the sewer system for, um, water quality, quality of life, values of home and that type of stuff. We've put together a map for you just to refresh the area. We've put together a couple of scenarios of uh, what this would look like over a twenty-year bond or a thirty-year bond, and we also identified some cost sharing between what those hooking up into the system would be paying on an annual basis for their share of the hookup and also what the remainder of the ratepayers in the system, um, would be paying depending on the cost share, um, if you ultimately decide on one. There is a requirement in state law that if we do expand the sewer system and a property is within a certain distance of it, they are required to hook up to it if we bring the sewer into the area. So if we go forward with a project, everybody would need to hook up to it. We had proposed at once, if we get approval, um, to continue this conversation, um, with a cost-sharing method, we would put together a letter to all of the impacted properties and we felt that a two-thirds, um, vote, majority, supermajority, if you will, of folks interested was a threshold that would make sense for the project to move forward versus maybe a simple majority vote where you might almost have a split on that. That's not subject to state law. That was internal discussion and staff recommendation, so we're open to other thoughts on that, but that would be the next approach. Were you to approve something tonight, that we would get letters out, do the follow-up as Mr. Holmesy had asked in case somebody didn't respond, and then determine whether there was strong neighborhood support to go this route under that cost, uh, analysis. And Krista Larson, our Assistant Director of Public Works, is here to get me to stop talking and answer whatever other questions you may have.
Did you have something prepared, Krista? Okay.
So I am also suffering from a cold, excuse me. So I'm going to keep it brief. Um, I do have a PowerPoint presentation and I think, um, Scott really hit on the highlights with the background, um, of this Woodvale Drive area. Okay, so I'm going to jump in. So we've been here before talking about the Woodvale Drive area. Um, so tonight, um, again, just an analysis of, analysis of expanding into the Woodville Drive area with possible, um, total possible rate increases on the ratepayers if we decide on a cost sharing and what that level of cost sharing would be with the ratepayers. So I am looking tonight for, um, support and a guidance from the council on how to proceed, um, with the cost share and if, uh, once we make a decision, um, to then go ahead and poll the abutters, um, and see what kind of support that we have. So again, a reminder, the Woodvale Drive area, um, its proximity to the lake, and this is why this area was selected as a good candidate for sewer expansion. There is, uh, as Scott said, fifty-one, um, single-family homes, Pine, Pine Notch Circle, um, Rolling Lane, Woodvale Drive, and some properties on, um, Endicott as well. So the construction, um, cost estimate in two thousand seventeen was one point four million dollars. Uh, this would, uh, per lot with fifty-one lots would be twenty-seven thousand dollars. That number does not include, um, actual tie-in of the service to the system, which would be from the point of exit at the house to, uh, the property line. We talked about this at previous meetings. That cost can range in, in order of four thousand dollars, but it does vary, um, significantly if you have ledge, if you've got a long run, um, those kinds of items. So we will look into the possibility of including the cost of that connection into the special assessment so that property owners don't have to pay that full cost upfront. So based on council feedback, um, went back and looked at both the twenty and thirty-year bond and, um, some varying levels of cost sharing between the abutters and the ratepayers. Uh, so this first slide here is for a twenty-year bond at a three and a half percent interest rate. The middle column is the average yearly cost to the abutters at decreasing levels of, um, cost-sharing participation. So it starts from no funding from the Sanitary Sewer Fund, SSF, Sanitary Sewer Fund, to it all being funded by the Sanitary Sewer Fund. And the last column is the annual cost to the ratepayers to support the twenty-year bond, um, with increasing loss, uh, cost sharing. So from no support to full support from the, um, Sanitary Sewer Fund. I've highlighted that fifty-fifty cost share, uh, because historically this has been the split on, um, sewer expansion projects and also feel that, um, that this level of cost sharing, it keeps costs reasonable for both the abutters and the ratepayers. So the next slide is, um, a similar exercise, and I'm going to present these slides at the end, um, side by side so we can look at all the numbers, um, together. Um, this slide is the thirty-year bond at a four point two-five percent interest rate. Again, I've highlighted that, um, fifty-fifty cost split. So I'll come back to this, but, um, first I wanted to just, like, take a look at what the cumulative impact would be on the ratepayers, um, in consideration of the recent rate increases, um, that were approved. So assuming that no construction begins in two thousand nineteen, um, I think, um, it's safe to say that we're, uh, we would not be making bond payments in two thousand nineteen. Um, the average sewer bill, based on the nine point five percent increase that had been approved last year, there, the average ratepayer is going to see a thirty-six dollar increase in two thousand nineteen. Then for two thousand twenty, at the three and a half percent increase of the sewer rate, we were going to get a fifteen-dollar on average increase to the ratepayers. So now if we add the bond payments on top of that fifteen-dollar increase, we're going to get a total twenty-dollar average increase to the ratepayer to pay for that sewer expansion. And then in two thousand twenty-one, we saw another increase of sixteen dollars due to the three and a half percent increase to the sewer rate. If we add on to that, uh, another bond to pay for sewer expansion, we're adding another, again, five dollars and up to twenty-one dollars. So similarly, for the, uh, thirty-year bond, we're going from, again, the fifteen-dollar increase from the, from the sewer rate increase and the sixteen-dollar increase, a four-dollar plus that for the bond to pay for sewer expansion from nineteen dollars to twenty dollars. Okay, in conclusion, uh, the Public Works is looking for guidance from the council on which level of cost sharing and which length of bond. Um, as mentioned, Public Works recommends a fifty-fifty split based on historical cost sharing. Uh, once a decision is made, Public Works will contact the abutters to determine the level of support. We do recommend a two-thirds majority support to move forward with the process as this has also, um, historically been the level of support required for sewer expansion projects. So here's your slide with both the twenty-year bond and thirty-year bond. If you look at page three in your handout, that's, that's there too. And I'd be happy to take questions.
Questions? Counselor Littman has a question.
Actually, my question's to the, the city manager. So in terms of proceed or not proceed, I guess, um, after we make that election, whether we go twenty or thirty would be, to my view, based, or twenty-five, thirty, whatever, would be based on getting, uh, bids on the, on the financing to see what rate makes sense rather than deciding it tonight here.
Sure, we were just, so what we would do in that case, if we were, we would probably just put these numbers out in a range to the abutters, saying depending on what terms were done, we would make them public, maybe offer people to come down and chime in on something and, uh, but we would want to give them a range so at least they would know the dollar amount that they potentially could be expecting.
Are those indicative rates from a, from a financing institution or are those just ones that we think?
We were trying to look at our crystal ball out a year to see where the Fed rates are right now, what treasuries are doing, what we think we could get either directly from a lender or through the municipal bond bank. Um, so they were, uh, I mean, Public Works reached out to me and I looked at some sources. We just didn't pull numbers out of the air, but knowing that this is probably going to be a year down the road before we issue debt on this, um, it was a, it was a best estimated guess on a future rate to be able to put some numbers to it.
Everybody understand what we're being asked to do here tonight? Counselor Hamel?
You got a question? Um, because the, um, last year we voted a forty-dollar increase, if I remember right, which took effect in this first quarter.
Correct.
So that we'll be getting that bill?
Yes.
All right. So this thirty-six dollar is another new one?
That's, that's actually the forty-dollar. The forty was an average for three years.
So that is the forty?
The first year was thirty-six, yes.
So then in the following year, you're going to add another twenty dollars?
If you do the, on top of that, if you do the fifty-fifty split, right, yes.
So at the end of those three years, you're up to seventy-one dollars in increases roughly?
Is that correct? Because I thought you said something different when you were presenting.
Yeah, I'm confused too.
Okay.
As you said, it went from fifteen to twenty dollars based on.
Those are increases every year?
Right.
Every what?
Year.
No, the difference between not doing the project and doing the project in two thousand twenty is fifteen if you don't do the project and twenty if we do.
If we looked at the first scenario, the thirty-six is already in and that started with consumption on February first, so those first bills will hit in, in three months or so. Next year, if we do nothing else, there's a fifteen-dollar increase.
That's the way I was.
That's the three and a half percent.
Right.
All right. So put this project aside, next year at this time, fifteen dollars additional to the, to the average user. If we do this project, there's five dollars more on top of that, but once that five dollars is built in, it's, it's already built in.
Yeah.
Okay. Third year, if we don't do this project and nothing else, you're getting the sixteen-dollar increase. So if we do nothing with Woodvale, we have thirty-six that's hitting now, fifteen that's hitting a year from now, and sixteen that's hitting a year after that.
Which is basically the four ninety-eight.
But once the five dollars gets built in, the five dollars is only happening one time because you're, that's the average cost over twenty years or it's four dollars over thirty years. So you're really only seeing that fifteen, the impact of that fifteen, one year. So if you were to look at the, uh, thirty-six and fifteen is fifty-one, sixteen is sixty-seven, and five is seventy-two, is covering you all three increases and the Woodville project.
That's what I said. It's going up in those three years by seventy-one dollars.
Without the Woodville project, it's still going up sixty-seven. So really, you're, you're, so you're looking at the difference of either sixty-seven dollars over three years or seventy-two dollars over three years.
Seventy-six, nine, nine bucks, right? Five and four.
Four if you're doing the thirty-year bond.
Okay.
Right. So based on the twenty, which would be the more expensive because you've got a shorter, shorter amortization, you're, you're at, whatever I said, seventy, seventy-one over three years versus sixty-six. So the project is really only impacting five dollars one time because once you get it built in there, it's built into your rate.
So it's going to cost you five times twenty if you do a twenty-year bond. Right? Hundred bucks over twenty years.
But the rate increase, that five-dollar rate increase is only being built in once. It's not five dollars and then an additional five-dollar increase the next year. Once you build that five dollars in, it's built into your rate. But the mayor, the mayor is correct. Five dollars over twenty years is a hundred dollars.
Yeah, but I'm sure within that twenty years, there's going to be a lot more increases.
I, I'm sure there will, but the flip side to that is there's also some additional houses coming online, so there's some additional revenue coming in to the Sanitary Sewer Fund for that as well.
Now, if they do the project, are they required to remove the septic system?
Yes, you would, you would abandon the septic system.
I mean, not abandon, remove it. Uh, because if you don't remove it, you've still got sludge and stuff that's going to.
Right. The, the tank, generally, the tank gets pumped, um, filled in, in place.
So if the exit for the sewer is on the backside of the house?
Right. You can, if you have the elevations, you can come around the house if you can get enough slope pitch. If you can't, you would have to replumb and come out the front.
So for me, my street, over twenty years, it's going to cost me a hundred bucks that I won't spend if we don't do this. So to extend water, to extend the sewer system to cover this neighborhood is going to cost me, who has nothing to do with this neighborhood, a hundred bucks over twenty years.
Correct.
On the other hand, it protects the water that we all, as a community, depend upon.
Exactly.
So I, I'd like to make a motion to proceed with the fifty-fifty split as we've.
Counselor Littman moves to approve a fifty-fifty cost share between the Sanitary Sewer Fund and the abutters if a two-thirds favorable response is refused, is received from the abutters. This is for the Woodville Drive area of Laconia. Seconded by Counselor Bowns. Any discussion?
So clarifying question from what Counselor Littman said earlier, you'd like us to propose that with the scenarios of twenty and thirty years and we can say subject to bond responses, interest rate responses. Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista.
Okay, next item starts on page twenty-six of your packet, and that is a third reading of Resolution twenty nineteen dash zero one relative to the Comcast proposal for a competitive cable TV franchise in Laconia. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, since the last council meeting, when we tabled this item, uh, pending a discussion with Comcast regarding our, uh, emergency alert system, uh, question and the removal of that from the original language, uh, representatives of, from Comcast and I, specifically Brian Christensen, who was in the audience tonight, connected and came to an agreement, which has been reviewed by the city's legal counsel. Uh, it's a very short one paragraph, which is uh, how sometimes I prefer legal documents to be short and to the point. It states Comcast shall provide a one-time grant to the city of Laconia in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the purpose of supporting the city's cable-related needs, including but not limited to local emergency alert system considerations within one hundred and twenty days of the execution of the cable television franchise. And that will be in a side letter, uh, which is a part of the franchise agreement, but not in the franchise agreement, but still bound, binding.
All right. First thing we need to do is take this off the table since we tabled it last time. So a motion would be in order to remove this item from the table and open it for discussion tonight. Counselor Littman makes that motion, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries. All right. So now we have on page twenty-six a series of motions we need to get to tonight. Uh, before we do that, well, let's, let's, let's pass the first motion and then we'll take it from there. The first motion would be to simply waive the reading of Resolution number one tonight. It's in entirety and to read it tonight by title only. That motion is made by Counselor Hosmer, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative. That motion carries. All right. So now it's back on the table and we can refer to it by title only. So we're looking for the will of the council tonight, and I guess we have to, we've already passed it on first reading and second reading at the last meeting, but now we need two more readings tonight.
I'm, just was covering all bases. This was tabled and coming back. We'd already done the second reading. It didn't seem to make it, so I'm just trying to do a paper trail if anybody is ever looking to track how this came through council agendas.
So we need a motion for the third reading?
You have three proposed motions listed there.
Which, which we already passed one, so we're now to the second proposed motion, if you care to make that motion, Counselor.
I will.
Bowns. All right. Counselor Bowns moves a third reading of Resolution number one relative to authorizing the city manager to sign any documents on behalf of the city relative to the Comcast proposal. relative to the Comcast proposal for competitive cable TV franchise in Laconia. Is there a second? Councilor Hosmer, seconded. All right, discussion? Councilor Cheney?
I, I would like to thank the manager and staff for the efforts they've made to allay my concerns, and, and I speak to support this, this Comcast franchise at this point.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative, that motion carries, and finally, we need a motion to approve Resolution Number One relative to authorizing the city manager to sign any documents on behalf of the city relative to the Comcast proposal for a competitive cable TV franchise in Laconia, including the side letter dated January twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Councilor Cheney makes that motion, seconded by Councilor Bowens, any discussion?
Well, I just want to comment. I know I, going farther than I should, indulge me. This is good for the city, it's good for the residents, it's good for the Lakes region. Thank you, everybody, for putting this together and getting this through.
I'm thankful we're not going to have a fourth, fifth, and sixth reading.
Oh, we could.
Wait a minute, I need to read this a fourth time.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative, that motion carries, all right, and thank you, gentlemen, from cable companies for your indulgence. All right, Item C tonight starts on page twenty-nine of your packet, and it is the Wow Trail Organization request to widen the sidewalk on the south side of Elm Street from the Wow Trail to Doris Ray Court. And joining us tonight is the executive director of the Wow Trail Organization, Bob Champlin. Welcome, sir.
Mayor Angler, City Councilor, thank you very much for having us. I just want to introduce Scott Davis, who is one of our Wow Board members, and my, what is that, Cheryl's?
How about you?
Uh, okay.
Good.
I'm not sure, but...
[laughing]
Do I see something here?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
So, so just in, in the standpoint of our purpose, Mayor Angler mentioned the concept of widening the sidewalk, and so all of you have a sense of where the Wow Trail comes out onto Elm Street, right by the Union Ave intersection, and we talked to the city manager and to DPW Director Anderson, to our city planner, and also to our recreation director about, since some work was going to be done in that intersection, could we be a part of taking people off of the Wow Trail and up Elm Street towards Doris Court, which is the, the spot where you enter for the O, and taking that sidewalk and being able to widen it? And so, we went through a collaborative process, first with the city manager, and then with the people I mentioned, getting their feedback, with our understanding that if we were able to do that, we would open up the neighborhoods on both sides of Elm Street, so on the Belvedere side and on the Bay Street side, we would then be able to have people, families with bicycles be able to come down and get on that sidewalk. Right now, it's only five feet wide, and it's not appropriate for bicycles. We have a couple of examples in, in the city, so that, for example, where the Wow Trail goes behind the library, St. Joseph's Church and all, and comes out onto Messer, which is Lyford there, is, is there, from Lyford all the way down to Bissin Ave, that sidewalk has been widened, and it's striped so that you can ride a bicycle, push a, a baby carriage, and be able to do both those things. We also have an example on Fair Street, where when you cross, which is basically Winnisquam Ave, where the Wow Trail comes across, you can get on the Fair Street Bridge, be able to do that, go around by the Old Citizen or what is now the Downtown Gym, and be able to, to be able to move that way as well. So we think it really opens up for all those neighborhoods in Elm, and in general, we really now have the possibility of going from somewhere on either side of Elm, all the way to Agway, which is over by Mosquito Bridge, and be able to, to do that. And the concept is something that nationally is looked at as what's called a complete streets project, so that if you are going to do work, if DPW is going to do work, can you look at pedestrians, can you look at all forms of use, if you will? And so, just as an example, the Court Street project that's been done, because as DPW Anderson explained to us, with the turn lane in the middle, there's not room for bike lanes on Court Street. We have the Wow Trail that's running parallel to that, and indeed, that's part of the plan, is that we want bicycles to be on the Wow Trail and not on Court Street. So this is a way, we hope, to create a, a real safety component, to being able to access the trail and to be able to get off the trail, and then the other piece about it is that it's very critical, as you would tell me if I didn't tell you, that those two lanes remain going down Elm Street to Union Ave, so that the, so, so there's no impact on that, and that's what, again, the director of DPW went out and did the initial work to be able to do that. There's a, a cost estimate right now, and I would defer to him as to the specifics, but of fifty-five thousand dollars, and our hope and proposal tonight is that we're attempting to gain a grant for ten thousand dollars, which would make that approximately forty-five thousand left, and that the Wow Trail would do twenty-two, five, and our hope is that DPW, the city, would, would do twenty-two, five. The stipulation we did put in that, when you look at a grant, you're not sure you're going to get it, the Wow Trail would take responsibility for that ten thousand, whether, whether we got the grant or not. So my hope is kind of to stop there and take your questions or thoughts and be able to respond as, as best I might.
Any questions for Bob? Oh, sorry, Councilor Hammel?
Not as well. I, I talked to Bob, and he said he was prepared to be peppered with questions, peppered with questions. I really don't have a question, but I, I do have a comment, and I want to say it's really nice to see Bob back and, uh, active again in a community. Bob's been a long, long supporter of doing good for Laconia, and I'm glad to see you back, Bob.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Hammel.
Couldn't have picked a better spokesman to come, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, how can you turn him down, you know? No.
Councilor Bowens?
I just want to give my own personal view, that the way that the city, before I was on the council, and the Wow Trail have worked together in collaboration, it's the kind of private, um, concept, working together with folks like you and the city, working together, it's exactly the kind of thing we should be doing, and we should be doing more of it. Thank you for your, all your efforts.
Thank you, Councilor Bowens, and I, I just mentioned that, uh, a lot of people don't know this, but the Wow Trail actually came from the city council, in that Councilor Toll, who I believe represented Ward Three, started the concept, and I actually wrote the initial grant with him, and he used to come over to the SAU with his dog in the, in the truck, and about forty-seven notebooks.
Crystal.
Uh, right? And then, while we were writing that grant, the person who is really the champion of Wow, Al Beatle, was pounding the pavement, getting the matching funds. So when the Wow Trail started, it was called El Trek, and it was actually the city councillor Toll and Al Beatle, and, uh, again, I think all of you know Al, he's just done a Herculean effort of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars raised for the children's auction, and we don't know where he is right now, he's somewhere south recovering from that, but, uh, it, the, the partnership that you talk about, I think, has been fantastic, and we get tremendous comments from the community about being able to use it, so this is just another extension of that.
Councilman Littman?
Picking up on the mayor's opening remarks tonight, it's another example of what's not good in Laconia, sarcasm intended, I mean, it's another great example of good community work, and, um, you know, the, the city's becoming more walkable and family-friendly with respect to the recreation opportunities with the Wow Trail additions, as well as the, um, walks along the, the river walks that have been done, so I think another thing to be proud of.
Councilor Hosmer, I believe this is in your ward, would you like to make the motion?
I'd love to.
Councilor Hosmer makes a motion to approve the request from the Wow Trail Organization to widen the sidewalk on the south side of Elm Street from the Wow Trail to Doris Ray Court, as presented, with financial arrangements, as also presented to the council tonight. Is there a second for that?
I'll second, I, I wonder, in terms of the funding for that, we have reserved in projects for, for sidewalks and what have you, we can fund it out of that?
We, we've got the funds in sidewalks that we can use, obviously, this is targeting, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars towards this specific one, next budget season is right around the corner.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Littman seconds that motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, both of you, for coming tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor.
See you both. Okay, one more item of new business tonight, and that is the sale of lots number six and seven in the Lakes Business Park, that's on page thirty-three of your packet, and the memorandum notes that the Lakes Business Park Commission, on which Councilman Littman and I sit, representing the city along with Frank Til, Representative Frank Tilton, approved the sale of lots six and seven in the business park at its meeting on January tenth, contingent upon approval from the Guilford Board of Selectmen and the Laconia City Council. We were offered, uh, for those two lots, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars by D A S L T C L L C, better known as Kevin Morissette, who also already owns two lots in the business park that they are developing, so this would be their third and, the third and fourth lot owned by the Morissettes. And so, per agreement from that mutually managed business park, this sale has to be approved by the Selectmen, as noted, and by the Laconia City Council. Councilman Littman, do you have something you want to add to that?
No, I, I think you covered.
Councilor Cheney?
Can I ask how large this, these lots are?
Uh, let's see, this lot is, does it say in the title?
Two point seven.
Three point nine-four acres and three point nine-two acres. This is on the, on the bypass side of the road, which is the more challenging side of the road because of terrain.
Yeah, we were given an estimate of over four hundred thousand for the site work.
Yeah, for site work.
Just to be able to...
It's, uh, it would be the lots immediately south of the, there are two buildings on that side of the road now, on the Guilford Ave end of things, there's a medical office building, and then a small industrial building next to that, and these would be the next two lots to the south of that. And one thing we are finding as time passes in the business park is that the, the cost in today's dollars of doing site work on these lots is really affecting what we can get for them, and we have lost more than one sale because of, of offers that were made, and then when they found out how much it was going to cost to do the site work, those costs of the lot paled in comparison to the site work cost, and, uh, so I, I believe one of the lots, uh, the Morissettes plan to use for their own purposes, their own offices, and then they hope to develop the other, other, uh, other lot for a future customer of theirs. Any other questions or comments before we get to a motion? All right, Councilman Littman moves then to approve the vote of the Lakes Business Park Commission for this sale of lots number six and seven in Lakes Business Park in the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and to authorize the city manager to sign the required documents in connection with the sale. Is there a second? Councilor Hammel seconds that motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative, that motion carries unanimously, thank you. All right, so we're on to unfinished business, uh, the first item of unfinished business starts on page thirty-eight, and that is the request to approve no parking on Clinton Street. I believe we tabled this at our last meeting, did we not?
Yes.
Yes, so a motion would be in order to bring this item off the table. Councilman Littman?
Did we, we put in a temporary parking and table, right?
Yes.
So the temporary parking signs went up, and then we notified the abutters by letter, and now they need to come off the table, yes?
Second, taking it off the table, seconded by Councilor Bowens, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes, affirmative, that motion carries, all right, the matter is back on the table before us. Councilman Littman?
I'd like to hear from Public Works Director on it.
What we're asking for is basically no parking on both sides of the road from basically the southern property line of eighty-eight Clinton, which is the rental property, and that's just as you're beginning to approach the corner to make the left, to go up to the top of the hill of Prospect, and it would be no parking on both sides of what road, all the way up to the intersection of Prospect. In the case of the right-hand side, as you go up, it stops at the, the closest side, in the case of the left-hand side, it stops just beyond the other side of Prospect.
Question I have is about the guardrail. I don't know where the guardrail is in this...
Guardrail basically extends from the Nesbit's property all the way up to almost the point where you contact, I think it's one-twenty-six, because you have a steep drop-off there. So I would say you're probably...
That is on which side of the street?
Uh, left-hand side, as you're going up the street.
Is the guardrail?
The right-hand side is a very steep bank, uh, going up to the private property that's on, uh, houses on that side of the road. Uh, what we're getting right now is basically bleed-through through the, the hillside onto it, which is constantly presenting problems for, you know, keeping the road ice-free, as well, it's the ability to be able to get our trucks around that corner when there's a car parked there.
Do you feel you need it all year round, or just seasonal?
You probably need the right-hand side from that same point, so you're not having to deal with a car and another car coming head-on as you're going up. You definitely have to have the guardrail side during the winter time, otherwise, you're not going to guarantee of getting a truck down, or anybody who's using it could slide down and hit any car that's at the base. Uh, it's more risky during the summer, only from the standpoint of what, emergency vehicle trying to go up there if there's another car there and one coming down.
Councilor Bowens?
I don't know if there's any way to, to accommodate a fifteen-minute or a thirty-minute stopoff, but it seems to me that if, on a spring day, or, uh, you need fifteen minutes and you pull over and park and drop off for thirty minutes, um, that's not going to create a huge problem, you know? Creating a time slot, um, in excess of, you know, I mean, you can't do two hours, I, I don't think, that, that doesn't make any sense at all. Um, so I, I'd like to accommodate their wish to have some kind of parking break on the guardrail side, but I, I don't know how I can do that, except to say that if you need fifteen or thirty minutes, that that's not really going to snarl things up, and you're probably not looking at a ticket, or something like that, that's all my, my comment is. No parking is no parking, except when you park there for a little while.
So what's before us tonight would not allow parking along the guardrail?
Correct.
Councilor Hammel?
I, I think going along with Dave said, uh, I think if you start putting like some timeframes and stuff like that, it's going to be a nightmare of enforcement. Uh, what are you going to call, uh, the policeman to go there every fifteen minutes, because he's moved, now they're back, and then you get, you got another fifteen, I mean, they'd be there all day, doesn't make any sense to me.
And they'll swear they just got there.
And you gotta, you really got to end that nightmare at the bottom of, at the bottom of the street, right at that apartment house, because it is dangerous, truly dangerous, even in the summertime, when you're coming down there, and, uh, conditions are perfect and other cars are parked there, it's just dangerous.
You know, if, uh, I could understand a winter ban on both sides... You know, if, I can understand the winter ban on both sides, but if we decide to let them park in the summer, is there one side of the street that's more advantage to the other? I mean, you know.
If you want to say one side on the summer, you would probably do the guardrail side, but then you'd have, you'd still be from the southern boundary of eighty-eight Clinton Avenue, up to a certain point in the guardrail, where you don't want parking in the left side to get you around that corner, so you can then see what's in front of you. So you wouldn't be parking at the lower edge of the guardrail, you'd be parking further up, and that's just from sight distance.
Just, just a comment, this is the worst hill in the city of Laconia.
I've been on it.
And you live there.
Shoot me.
I guess what concerns me here, and I, I understand it's not a simple situation, is, you know, what, what it seems like we don't need is a parking regulation, that you have to have a historical marker there with seven hundred words of copy to explain exactly what you can do, and what hours you can do, and what month you can do it in.
Right.
I mean, to me, that's just way too complicated for, for.
We have an ordinance about parking on the streets for, for winter, so I mean, I think, why don't we try something and come back and revisit it if it's not working?
What do you want to try?
Oh, it's, it sounds like that the winter is, for the, for the months of November through, or October through May, or whatever you pick, there's no parking on either side, right? That, that we all agree on, we've gotten some one-foot storms in October before, and we've gotten snow as late as May eighth.
I think the winter parking ban officially runs November first to April thirtieth.
Correct.
And with the police chief's recommendation, in concurrence with Public Works Director, they could lift that sooner if we're in the middle of March, and it doesn't look like anything, or, I'm sorry, if we're in the middle of April, and there's nothing on the horizon for the next ten days, we could lift it a week or two early if there was agreement to do that.
Well, I, you know, I'm.
You live there, so you decide.
Well, I, I'm in favor of a year-round parking ban on both sides, but I'm willing to try a, just a wintertime parking ban on both sides, and summertime, and when it's not winter, you can park along the guardrail. I'd like to move it up a little bit above your house, because that gets kind of close, and move it down a little from the corner, so you don't have that nightmare turn at the, at the top. But I, I want to be sure we come back and visit this again before we do that, just make it the wintertime ban, and come back and review this, won't take us that long, review this when we're going, we're going to consider lifting the ban, I think that's a reasonable approach.
Can we review the shoot-me thing again?
Well, just some extra that I understand, so on the.
Yes, we can.
The right-hand side of the road, going up the hill, that's going to be a year-round ban for no parking.
Year-round ban for no park, no park.
On the left-hand side, wintertime, no parking ban, are we going to have the ban from basically the southern boundary to just beyond, and I'll have to figure out where it is from sightline distance, but it's got to be up the guardrail a bit.
It's got to be, as you, as you're coming up the hill, it's got to be further up from the, from the driveway, the guardrail ends at the, at that driveway there.
Yeah.
So it's got to be further up from there, I don't know, it's twenty feet, and it's got to be further down from the top of the hill where the guardrail ends, and I, I just think we need to review it and get some more information, because I don't think that's practical at all, and I don't, I understand what you're looking for.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Sir, please use the microphone.
Sorry.
There's three poles on the right-hand side, the first pole by eighty-seven, John's house, just before it, if you count three poles up, and you put the parking, no parking from there down, but one all the way up there, but when you get to that third pole, you take and put a sign right across on the guardrail that says no parking there, you'll have plenty of sight, and it'll be, you got to walk aways, but if you can't walk, and you pack your car, wow, you got a problem, you don't need to be on top of the bottom of the guardrail. You know where I'm talking about?
All right, let's just, let's just review it, I'm, I'm willing to go along with something like that, and.
All right, I guess to be more specific, if we can let the Director of Public Works and the manager make that decision as to where the point is.
We, we understand the gist, and there seems to be a lot of nodding from folks who are very familiar with it, including Counselor Bowns.
Well, don't we need to have the exact language come back to us as to what this is going to say, so we have a legal basis for trying to enforce this?
So for, for, for right now, we're banning it on both sides for the winter, so we have time to come back with the language.
With the exact language.
But that wouldn't prohibit daytime parking, because the winter parking ban is only for overnight parking.
Excuse me, then.
We have something enforced right now temporarily, correct?
Through today.
We've got some temporary signs up there that we're running through today.
Can't we just continue those for the interim?
Sure, we could do that all winter, just make it temporary no parking on that side, and we probably aren't going to be able to get signposts in this winter anyway, but if you approved permanently no parking on the non-guardrail side, let's refer to it as, you can make that motion, and you can just extend the temporary no parking on the guardrail side through the winter, we can work out the exact footprint for you to come back, and you can do the second piece.
Steps down from the second telephone pole on the left.
There you go, but next to, next to the big rock.
I gotta, I gotta take you on a tour, that's what I gotta do.
The pin is near the sugar maple tree.
So you can either say, extend the temporary no parking on both sides until the end of the winter parking ban, that would be the neatest thing, and then we can get you specifics to amend that.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Your ward, you make the motion.
No parking on the right-hand side of Clinton Street going up the hill, permanently.
From where to where?
From eighty-eight, as, as you proposed, from eighty-eight to the intersection of Clinton and, and Prospect Street, and continuation of the no parking, and the continuation of the no parking on the left-hand side of the street from eighty-eight Clinton to Prospect and, and Clinton, and just leave it at that, and you can all figure out.
If you just add the words "in conjunction with the winter parking ban."
In conjunction with the winter parking ban.
That gives us a sunsetting date for the guardrail side.
Okay.
All right, Counselor, Counselor Bowns moves to ban parking on the right-hand side of.
Non-guardrail side.
I'm sorry?
The non-guardrail side.
The narn, the uphill side.
It's too uphill.
Non-guardrail rail side of Clinton Street between, between.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight Clinton Street at the intersection of Prospect, and to, and to, so that's part one of the motion. He also moves to ban parking on the opposite side of the street through the end of the winter, the city's winter parking ban, is that correct, Mr.?
Yes, that gets you where I think everybody wants to be.
Gets us where we want to be.
That gets you where you want to be, then we can refine the language and bring it to you sometime in the spring for anything.
So we all understand we're currently blaming, banning it on the right-hand side on the way up, we're temporarily, we're temporarily banning it on the left side as going up until the end of April.
And you all are going to take a tour with me up that hill.
All right. Mr. Mayor, there was a gentleman in the back that wanted to say something.
I know the street very well, I was just going to say from, in the right side and the left side, you'd ban it from eighty-seven.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying from a right side and a left side of the street, you'd be banning the parking from side eighty-seven, which would be the right side of the street, and then banning it from eighty-eight on the left side of the street, if that makes more sense in the writing of it, because that dictates the side of the street, by calling out the.
I'm not hearing that.
You get his name.
Am I not speaking into it right?
It's been turned down.
I don't think it's working, it's not your fault.
I can yell it out if you want to.
There you go.
Okay, I was saying that from the banning part, you would ban it from eighty-seven, which is the right side of the street, going up that side, then you would ban it from eighty-eight on the left side of the street, and that would separate your summers and your winters a lot easier than calling it from the left-hand side of the street from the eighty-eight number.
All right.
Excuse me?
Your name?
Michael Feeny, I'm sorry.
All right, that's, we're going to call that a friendly amendment. So do you have that? All right, everybody understand what we're doing here, that's the main thing. Okay, and then we're going to have DPW come back to us in the spring sometime with the exact wording of a proposal for the, the left-hand side, correct, for a permanent solution there.
Guardrail side.
Guardrail side, all right.
What happened eighty-seven and eighty-eight?
All right, please, all those in favor of the motion, did we have a second on that?
No, I didn't get a second.
All right, so we have a, we had the motion by Counselor Bowns, and a second by Counselor Hosmer. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously, thank you for everyone's patience on that. All right, last piece of regular business tonight is item twenty-one B, which is the Colonial Theater Project. I have one thing I want to add on that, and then we'll open it for any discussion. This, there was nothing tabled on that, it's just, it just remains on the agenda, if we want to discuss it, we don't have to. So a couple of points that I'd like to make, one is that, that from a procedural standpoint, what I see happening here is, there, there, there is an act of resolution on this subject that the council committed the city to when it passed a motion in September of last year, I'm sorry, September of two thousand seventeen, that's the act of resolution at this point in time dealing with the city's involvement in the Colonial Theater Project. That resolution takes the place of the one that was passed originally in the summer of two thousand and fifteen. At our next meeting, first meeting in February, I will provide you with copies of those two resolutions, plus I will provide you with a copy, Counselor Hamill and I will provide you of the changes that we proposed, the proposed changes to that resolution, so you'll have all three documents at our next meeting. And then what we would ask for is that they be studied, any questions asked, et cetera, and that the council come to a resolution on this matter at its second meeting in February. Is that timetable agreeable to everyone?
Yes.
All right, so you've got plenty of time to, you'll have plenty of time, you'll have another two weeks to look over those resolutions, et cetera, et cetera, after we, we hand them off, they'll be part of your packet when you get your packet for our next meeting, those three resolutions, so you can see the evolution of, of where that's been and where it's going, or where it's proposed to go. The other thing that I want to, to say if I could as a preface here tonight is, I've had some interesting discussions over the past few weeks since this came up again with people in the community, I've also kept my ear tuned to public comment, both in terms of personal, and in terms of, again, the newspaper, and in terms of what I read online. And I will, I will take the blame for this myself, but there seems to be a considerable amount of misunderstanding, if you will, in the community as to what exactly the city's commitment is and has been at this point in time. And I know the council knows where we stand on this, but for, for, I'm going to make the statement, then I'm probably going to draft something also this week to put in the newspaper on this subject, to try to clarify it even, even further for people who are not listening or watching tonight, and that is that, that there seems to be a misunderstanding on a number of people's part, that the city has already invested four point two million dollars in this project, and that is not the case, and I want to emphasize that that is not the case. To date, the city has loaned the Bellknap Economic Development Council one point four million dollars that was used in the summer of two thousand and fifteen to purchase the theater, that's it. So that, that, on our books officially, the city manager can clarify that, is a performing asset really, because it's a loan, it's not an expenditure, and, and, so that's still on our books as an asset to the city, because it's money that's earning interest, they're paying us four thousand dollars a month roughly interest on that loan, and have been since the summer of two thousand and fifteen. So we are committed by that resolution that I referenced that was passed originally in two thousand and fifteen, and then again in two thousand and seventeen, we are committed to putting at this moment four point two million dollars into the project, but we have not done so. And what I want to reiterate is that, and make sure everybody, try to make sure everybody understands how this works, is what we're all working toward here is a, is in effect a construction loan closing date, that's what we're all chasing, and, and this is all guided and mandated by federal law as to how this has to happen, because federal funds are involved. The funding stack that we went over the last time is complicated, it has like ten different items in it, ten different sources of money, and at the closing, which we hope will be in the middle of this year, at the closing, all ten of those funding sources have to come together at the exact same time, at the exact same place, for this to happen. If one of those sources, let alone more than one, don't show up at the table with cash, the whole deal is off, and it's done, or at least it's back to the starting line again on this thing. So our commitment is to show up, the city's commitment is to show up at that closing with four point two million dollars, that's our commitment, but if the other parties involved in this don't share, show up with their share of the money, and that means every single one of them, then we don't put our four point two million dollars on the table, it's not at risk unless every other piece of the funding stack comes together at the exact same hour and date, okay? So if there's any questions at that point in time at the closing, that somebody hasn't got all their ducks in a row, and that money's not there, then the deal stops right there, and we keep our money. All right, and I just want to make sure everybody understands that. So we have not spent, it's not a matter of we've already spent four point two million dollars, and now we're asking for another nine hundred thousand, that is not the case. Again, I know you know that, but I think people in the, in the public are confused about that, and we will not invest another dime in this project unless it's a guaranteed go, that everybody's money is on the table. Now, as for the prices concerned, and, and the possibility of a rising price, I also want to alleviate concerns in that area, because at that closing, if the closing happens, and we fully commit the city's resources to this project to the agreed-upon level, we will have a guaranteed maximum price on that project, okay? The general contractor at that point has to perform for that price, and so this is not a situation where we're going to get into this situation and find out, well, we need another million, we need another two million, whatever the case may be, it's highly, highly unlikely, because we will have a guaranteed maximum price for doing the project, okay? So with that, I'm here tonight, Counselor Hamill is here tonight, to answer any questions at this point, if you have any, or to take notes on questions that you would like us to have, to provide you with answers to at a future date if we can't answer them tonight. Counselor Cheney.
Mayor, I, I don't, I don't speak for my fellow freshmen, but there's a lot of, moving parts here that I don't know a lot about, and I was kind of hoping there'd be a time where we could sit down and, and you could, or someone could tell us in more detail. For instance, there was a campaign to get citizens to contribute, I know there's commitments have those funds in fact been collected.
All right, that's a good question, and I'll give you the answer to that, but really quickly, about one point five million dollars roughly has been given or pledged to this project from private sources. Approximately half of that money is in the bank, the other half still exists in formal pledges. Those pledges aren't going to be accepted at the closing, they have to be converted to cash.
Right.
So the plan is to borrow the money from local banks on a short-term, low basis to make up the seven hundred thousand dollars that won't be there at closing, and then the carrying cost, if you will, the interest on that loan will be part of the, of the so-called performa for the project, which will have to be paid back. Now largely, those consist of large donations from the banks themselves that are being done over time, so that debt service in effect will come down quickly and fast, like a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, so that won't last that long, but all, every, every dollar of the one point five million has to be at the closing, and so the way that's going to happen is the money we've already collected will be there, and a, and a temporary bridge loan will be in place to get the rest of the cash at the table.
But, but that then leads, at least me, to the question of, the bridge loan is the city's obligation?
No. No.
Whose is it?
Well.
Well, I, I don't think you should have to answer that right now. I guess what I'm asking is, could we have an hour or two, or could I, and, and I don't know about the other two, but I suspect, could we have an hour or two where we could just sit down and, and you walk us through what's gone on in the past? Because I, I came in here glad that the Colonial Theater was going to be refurbished and, and recovered. I, I still am. But I, I would like have a better understanding of the decisions that have been made up to this point and the commitments that have been made up to this point, so that when we get to the nine hundred thousand, I'll feel better.
All right, how, let me, let me suggest this. How about if we, I don't think we have any skin scheduled prior to our first meeting in February, do we? Any committee meetings? How about if we invite the entire council, but those of you who want to come, how about if we invite you to a meeting, a public meeting? At six o'clock that night, if you think that's enough time, on February, what, eleventh?
Yes.
And Counselor Hamel and I will be there, and we will be prepared to, to answer any and all of your questions at that point in time. For those of you who feel you don't need to be briefed any further or whatnot, you don't have to come to that, but.
But, but I don't.
Everyone would be welcome, and that would be the only subject.
I don't, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's not just to be there to answer questions, because I'm not sure I know what the questions are.
You want a presentation.
I want a presentation to understand how, how we got, where we are and, and what commitments have been made. And, and I'm not sure that'll even take an hour, but I, I.
Take an hour, all right.
Well, yes, it may.
Could easily.
Yeah, but it's.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Do you think an hour's enough?
I would suspect if it isn't, we can always.
We can do it again.
Do it again, yes.
We have.
I'm prepared to do that.
We have thirty meetings to go over word by word with you.
Well, you and I will sit down and do that then. We'll see which one of us lasts the longer.
Do we need a motion then to schedule that?
Yes.
All right, so Counselor Cheney then moves to schedule a special session of city council or a public meeting to take place on February eleventh in this chamber at six P M. for a presentation by the mayor and Counselor Hamel on the history of the city's involvement in the Colonial Theater project.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowden. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in favor that motion carries. Okay, Counselor Lippman.
Just certain dollar figures of being like nine hundred thousand thrown around or whatever, or four million or what have you. I think at some point also part of the informational session, which the manager, the finance director may be able to speak to in terms of, we're not talking about a shock to the tax rate, okay? And I think that's important to walk.
Where's the money coming from?
Where's the money coming through and when?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Counselor Haynes.
Oh, I agree with Counselor Lippman, and I support Counselor Cheney's motion. I think one of the things that I found is that when the people that spoke to me and sent emails and texts, once you sit down and explain the process, they're fine with it. The perception that was given out in the community is, we just take nine hundred thousand dollars and just throw it out the window. And it, you know, it's like chasing bad money and, and, you know, the money pit. And once you sit down and talk with people, they understand what you're doing. And, you know, the gentleman that I sent you the email, once I sat down and spoke with him, he was fine with it.
I've had the same experience over the last couple of weeks with this. What the hell are you doing? And you sit down and explain what actually is happening and whatnot, and, and most of the questions are answered and the people remain, are supportive.
I think once the people in the community see the facts, the sensationalism of the money pit goes away.
I agree. Anyone else? Okay, we'll just leave this item then, and we'll, we'll have that presentation on the eleventh, and then this item will remain on the agenda for the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. All right, council comments. Anyone? Counselor Cheney does not disappoint.
I was hoping I could find out what the status is of our dealing with the policy for designating emergency lanes or streets or roads, what progress has been made on that.
Mr. Myers?
We are going to be having a budget request coming up in the proposed budget for next fiscal year, to have some dollars to start doing the as-is, when road lays, layouts and the surveys and that type of stuff. We're not expending huge dollars, but there's going to be a certain cost that's not available within the public works budget to be going after all of those roads, starting in the Methodist campground area and identifying some other roads, to be going through that process with neighborhoods. So part of it is monetary and part of it is in winter conditions, it's not the time to be going out and doing that, but we are still working toward that.
The other part of it, Scott, was a policy. I, I thought we talked about setting up a policy for how we would go forward, identifying emergency lanes versus the roads that we would condition, unconditionally or whatever it is, except, and I just wondered where we were on that.
We, we do owe you another document through some of the sewer rate increases, some of the hybrids we've run across on as-is and emergency lanes and emergency lanes, winter maintenance only. We've kind of been rewriting the book a little bit along the way, so we are still plugging ahead with a few curveballs thrown at us from time to time, but it's still.
Fair enough.
It's still on our radar. I didn't think you could handle sewer and emergency lanes in one meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes. Any other council comments? We don't need a non-public tonight that I'm aware of, all right? So I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned at nine fourteen P M. Thank you.
I have been remiss. Welcome to the city of Laconia.
I remember you.
This is, this is your honeymoon period. One more meeting and it's all you. When I go on, when I go on vacation for six weeks.
You're going to start putting the pressure on.
Well, I appreciate the warning.
How's everybody in the venue?
Well, I think the main perception of the house is like we've already spent four million dollars, there's nothing been done, and like, where did the money go? They look at the outside of the building, it still looks the same. It's like, where's the money going?
Another one, man, they're taking it easy on the new guy. The night I got hired, I was like, come sit up here for that meeting. I don't know what you think I'm going to contribute to it, but.